Chairman. Mr. Hodge has nominated Mr. Harmer. Mr. Hodge, do you have a second? The motion is that Mr. David Harmer be elected temporary chairman of the council to oversee the election of the chairman for the remainder of the council year 2018-19. All those in favour of Mr. Harmer, please show. I declare Mr. Harmer be duly elected for the meeting.
Thank you, members. Try again. So, first of all, we now can go to part one of item one, the amendment of article four. Mr. Hodge. So, the recommendations are on page eleven of your agenda, and they are: A) that council approves the amendment of article 4.03 of the county council's constitution regarding the arrangements for chairing the council to include the following wording: "In the event of an in-year vacancy in either role, an election will be held for a replacement to serve until the next annual general meeting of the council." And B) that once approved, these changes be incorporated into the council's constitution and published on the council's website. Are we agreed?
Agreed.
Anyone not? Thank you. So, now we move on to part two of this process, the election of chairman for the remainder of the council year 2018-19. I ask the chief executive to announce any nominations.
Mr. Hodge has nominated Mr. Samuels.
Mr. Hodge.
Thank you, chairman. I am pleased to recommend Council Tony Samuels as the forthcoming chairman of this council for the rest of this year, and no doubt we'll have another vote next year. Well, thank you, chairman.
Mr. Harrison, I believe that you're seconding this motion.
Yes, indeed, I do second the nomination of Council Samuels.
Mr. Button? Any comment? No? Okay, that's fine. So, the motion is that Mr. Anthony David Samuels be elected chairman of the council for council year 2018, or balance of the council year 2018-19. All those in favour of Mr. Samuels, please show. Anyone against? In that case, I declare Mr. Samuels to be duly elected. Right, my declaration of office. I, Anthony David Samuels, having been appointed to the office of chairman of the county council for the County of Surrey, declare that I take office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgment and ability. Thank you, sir. Dear colleagues, I wish with all my heart that this could be a happier occasion, but I promise to do my best to fulfil this great office and assure you that my door will always be open to all of you, including my wonderful officers up there too. Thank you. So, let's proceed with apologies for absence. I've received apologies for absence from Asher Zadd, Zully Grant Duff, Graham Elwood, Keith Witham, Wyatt Ramsdale, Ernest Mallett, and Marissa Heath with the nicest possible inclination because she's just had a little baby, Petra, spoke to her last night and sent her our congratulations. Any others at all, members? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So, members in line with our guidance on the use of social media, I'm happy for anyone attending today's meeting, including members of the council, to use social media provided that this does not disturb the business of the meeting. And I would like to remind you that this meeting is being webcast, although I have the right to suspend it should I think appropriate. So, moving to item three, minutes. Members, I've been asked to point out the correction to the minutes, it's in the final bullet point on page twenty-two of your agenda, where it should read nitrogen dioxide rather than carbon dioxide. Fortunately, it's not nitrous oxide, so you don't need to laugh. In addition, Council Lake has pointed out some grammatical rather than factual errors in the minutes, which Democratic Services will correct. With those corrections, may I sign the minutes of the council, held on 10th July 2018, as a correct record of the meeting? Thank you. Item four, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of disclosable pecuniary interests, significant personal interests, or prejudicial interests that members wish to make at this point? Thank you. Moving on to item five, chairman's announcements. Men... Oh, Mr. Bennison.
Sorry, chairman, I thought we were going to have a one-minute silence.
If you have a little bit of patience, Mr. Bennison, I'm moving on to that now. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, before anything else, I am sure like me, you were extremely saddened to hear the news last week about the death of our colleague, Richard Wilson, the county councillor for the by fleets. Can I therefore invite you all to stand with me for a minute's silence to Richard, in my opinion, a true gentleman and a hard-working councillor? Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to some other events that I'd like to bring your attention to. I'd like to congratulate Surrey County Cricket Club on winning the county championship this year. And also, I attended the RAF 100 aircraft tour at Horse Guards Parade in London to celebrate their official one-hundredth birthday and saw the amazing Flypaston Parade. More locally, I'm pleased to congratulate on your behalf the Surrey Pensions team, led by Neil Mason and Tim Evans, chairman of the Surrey Pensions Fund Committee. As for the second year running, they've won the award. Congratulations to them all, especially Tim Evans. Mr. Evans, would you like to say a word?
Because Neil was going to come and watch this, I don't think he's up there yet.
The phone?
Mine's on. Oh, it's on, it's on.
I put it on.
It's on, I was just hoping that Neil would be up there in the audience, but he hasn't made it. I told him it would be about ten-twenty, and he's got it wrong. Or I got it wrong.
Yes, but you got the pensions right, so that's the main thing. Item six, appointment of the vice-chairman. Chief executive, please announce any nominations for the vice-chairman role.
Mary Lewis has nominated Mrs. Clack.
I call Mr. Hodge to say a few words in support. Oh, it's Mary Lewis, actually. Mary.
Thank you, chairman. Helen Clack is an ideal person to represent the county council in any forum. Her work as cabinet member for communities took her all over Surrey, working with partners on high-profile events such as the Olympics and Magna Carta. Helen has since held various different cabinet portfolios, and so she has an extensive knowledge of the voluntary community and faith sector, of healthcare organisations, and of the districts and boroughs. She is also well-known by many in the civic sphere. Helen is thus ideally equipped to give strong support to the new chairman, and I'm pleased to nominate her as a worthy candidate for the office of vice-chairman of this council.
Mr. Button?
Chairman, it's a privilege to nominate Mrs. Helen Clack, to second Mrs. Clack for this distinguished role. She will bring grace and good humour to it, and we're very lucky to have her. I so second.
So, council, the motion is that Mrs. Helen Clack be appointed vice-chairman of the council for the council year 2018-19. All those in favour of Mrs. Clack, please show. Thank you. Mrs. Clack, would you like to come up? Many congratulations on behalf of the honourable members.
Thank you, chairman. Lovely.
Would you like to address us, please?
I, Helen Clack, have been appointed to the office of vice-chairman of the county council for the County of Surrey, declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgment and ability. Thank you. There you are. Thank you very much. So, thank you all very much for your support today. This is the beginning of a new year for me. I'm really excited and looking forward to it and working with our new chairman as well. Like Tony, my door will be open to all members, and I really appreciate the kind words that have been said today by Mary and by Chris. Thank you very much indeed. Thank you.
Thank you, vice-chairman. Item seven, the leader's statement. I call the leader to make his statement, and as you know, members can make comments as well as ask questions after the leader has made his statement. Leader.
Chairman, I wonder if you'd allow me a few moments to talk about somebody who I admired, had immense courage, Richard Wilson. Richard was a great councillor. We can't say that about everyone, but Richard was a great councillor, highly respected by all of us in our Conservative group, and I know many of the opposition groups had a great deal of time for Richard, both here and at Woking Borough Council. Richard stood up for his residents. That probably for me is one of the most important things I could say about a councillor. Did he or did he not stand up for his residents? And Richard did. He loved his residents, he fought battles for them. Many of you may not have been aware of it, but quietly, diligently, he went about his duties. And I know officers at the county council had a huge amount of time for Richard, went either way to help Richard because he showed respect back. Personally, I would miss Richard really deeply. He was a lovely man, a kind man, a terrific father, and a brilliant husband to his children. Despite his health battles, he always came in cheerful, positive, happy, and how could he do something different? How could he change things? All I will say is that when the time comes for Richard's burial, I hope that many of us in this chamber will pay our respects by doing everything we can to turn up on that day. I believe it will say a tremendous thank you from the people of Surrey to a great councillor, but also will send a message to his wife Camilla and the children for how much he was respected and loved by all of us. Thank you, chairman. So, now that, Mr. Chairman, you're in the seat that you've been looking forward to, can I first of all congratulate you and the vice-chairman Helen Clack on your new roles? And I know that you will be a credit to the people of Surrey. It's a huge honour for anyone to be elected chairman of this council. It's a role that brings that person right into the heart of our communities, right into the heart of the voluntary sector, into the civic role, and it's really important that we never lose sight of that role. I'm sure to put yourself, and Helen will be a great testament for Surrey. So, now that there is a vacancy on the cabinet that Helen has left, I was wondering if anybody wanted the vacancy, but I am delighted to say I've asked Charlotte Morley to step up and take Helen's place. I have no doubt she'd be a great addition to the cabinet. Thank you, Charlotte. So, Mr. Chairman, this is one of the most important speeches I will make. In fact, it will be shorter than normal. As you all know, I became a councillor to make a difference to local people, just like all of us in this chamber. My background drove me to do everything I could to make a difference to people's lives. I never forgot the people who brought me up. Without them, I couldn't have achieved anything in life. We all have different backgrounds. I was brought up in care, and that embedded in me a deep desire to help others, recognising that no one should be left behind. That would be a real challenge for all of us as we embark on some significant changes to our services. But we must succeed despite the stark realities that we face. Mr. Chairman, the realities of our current position are: one, in 2011, the government transferred responsibility for eight hundred and sixty residents with severe learning disabilities from the National Health Service to Surrey County Council. The National Health Service transferred a funding of sixty-five million annually to Surrey so that we could continue to fulfil this important social duty we have. Over the past five or six years, I regret that funding has been slowly eroded by government and left us with not a single penny to look after these vulnerable residents in our communities. Now it is Surrey council taxpayers who are footing that bill every year. In 2013, the government transferred responsibilities for public health duties from the National Health Service to councils once again. The funding Surrey receives falls short by thirteen million annually, and once again, Surrey council taxpayers are funding this bill every year. In recent years, we have welcomed unaccompanied asylum-seeking children from abroad, but government funding does not meet the full course of looking after them, once again leaving Surrey council taxpayers to foot a bill of nearly five million a year. In addition, compared to similar counties, funding for Surrey roads falls short by eleven million a year. Mr. Chairman and members, these four items alone create a budget pressure of ninety million a year, a financial pressure that Surrey council taxpayers are funding every year. There is no significant government funding being made available to meet these shortfalls, but in addition, this council continues to be faced with significant demand pressures. So, let me just set out a few of these demand pressures. The number of children, of Surrey children with statutory plans for special education needs and disabilities has risen by almost forty per cent since 2015. This means that we need to provide additional support to an extra one thousand children and young people with special education needs and disabilities this year alone. Surrey school population continues to rise above the national average. This means we will continue to have to find more school places for more funding. Working-age adults with learning disabilities will be up to almost eighteen thousand by 2030, and there will be more than eighty-two thousand elderly residents living alone by 2030, a rise of thirty-four per cent on today's figures. In addition, we are fortunate in that many people in Surrey live longer than many others in other places, and the longer that people live, the greater number of complex health issues they may suffer. The chance of being diagnosed with other health issues such as dementia increases. This places huge strain on our adult social care budget. These, Mr. Chairman and members, are the harsh realities we are facing today, and that is the reason why we have to transform all services across the county council and across Surrey. Mr. Chairman, we have done our best to fight our corner for residents. We seek fairer funding for Surrey residents. We will continue to do so. We have saved five hundred and forty million from our budget since 2010, and we are on course this year to make savings and cost reductions of a hundred and six million this year alone. But there are still huge financial hurdles ahead for this council. We need to save, we still need to save a further hundred and fifty million in the next two financial years. The next couple of years are going to be tough, very tough, tough for our residents, tough for every member in this chamber, tough on the doorstep when we are explaining to residents why we have to reduce or change some services. It is not going to be easy. Our priority must be for children adult social care services, as they are the most vital for our vulnerable residents. Sadly, this will mean reductions, excuse me, reductions or changes in other services, which our residents and communities value highly. None of us in this chamber have ever expected to be in this position. None of us came into public life and public service to reduce services. I suspect none of us are happy doing this, but we have to live within our financial means, and we have to balance our books every year. Our draft financial strategy that we will consider at cabinet later this month, and then in the chamber in November, sets out, will set out the blueprint that will enable us to do this over the next few years. At the same time, we must focus on achieving improvement in outcomes. That is why we will deliver new ambitious plans to support children and families to our family resilience programme, as well as a new, as well as through a new special educational needs plan that aims to intervene earlier and better. In the next few weeks, we will begin a series of consultations with Surrey residents and our partners on changes to subsidised bus services, remodelling our community recycling provision, transforming our library service, creating more vibrant community hubs, how we look at the use of children's centres as part of the early help offer, and our youth offer for the most vulnerable. And finally, we have to look at a reform of our special education needs and disability strategy. Mr. Chairman, we spend seventy per cent of our budget on children and adult social care services. We have to look after children and older residents who need social care support. We cannot turn our backs on them. We cannot afford to fail them. They need us. We are their champion. But we must also be positive about the future. I believe we can manage these challenges. I have every confidence, excuse me, in the members and officers of this council that we can step up to the plate, change things, and make a real difference for our residents. What is needed is a different vision, a different focus, a change in culture to enable us to meet the demands and challenges that lie ahead. During the summer, we engaged with our partners and residents to consult on the draft vision. I'm delighted to say that over three thousand people took part, and I would like to thank every one of them who contribute and share their thoughts and aspirations for the future of our great county. We will be discussing this vision later in today's meeting, but at this point, I would like to say, excuse me, that the heart of the vision is a clear commitment to partnership working. And that partnership shall be with Surrey and district boroughs, the Surrey voluntary and community groups, the health service, the police service, parish councils and residents associations, our business community, and most importantly, our residents. We already have a very good relationship with our partners, but we need to embed this stronger into our DNA and take it further, much further. No longer can we simply say, "We will deliver," or it's somebody else's problem. We must ask ourselves, who is best to deliver? Who is best to deliver a specific service for our residents? In some cases, it will be our district and borough partners; in others, it will be the voluntary and community sectors, or parish councils, or our residents associations, or it may even be us. But there will be incidents when residents are best placed to do things for themselves, and our job will be to enable them to do that. What is essential if we are to succeed is that we all believe in this partnership. Part of the solution will be developing, will be developing deals, local deals, local deals that are different in different parts of the county. What will be right for Woking will be different what is right for Mole Valley, or for Tandrich, or for Spelthorn, or for any of our districts. Inside those districts, in different communities, there will be different deals that we will need to make. We need to identify the best local solutions and be clear in our minds that local deals will mean local things for local communities and local councils and local people. The power is in our hands to change the way we do things. It's up to us to do that. Collectively, our strength will be significant and working in partnerships. We can build better futures for our residents, and it is the only option on the table. While I welcomed the Prime Minister's speech last week, in which he promised support for public services will go up, we cannot assume there will be sufficient support to make a lasting difference to us today. We have to assume there will be no extra money. We have to assume that government may not be able to come to our aid, and the truth is that without change, our demographic pressures will be unsustainable. So, let's harness our strengths and build a future, a better future, a brighter future together for our county, for our communities, and particularly for our residents. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, leader. Now, it's time to open for questions and comments. I call Mr. Button.
Thank you, chairman. I'm happy to associate myself with many of the remarks of the leader, and I'm happy to associate myself with his concern that our funding for people with learning disabilities, our funding for public health, our funding for unaccompanied asylum-seeking children, and for highways is below par and is below what we should be entitled to. I accept that, but this is an austerity government, and it's important that this council stands between austerity and its residents. It's also important that we do not develop a narrative of victimhood. We have much to offer, and we need to build on those offers if we are to sustain services in a way which protects the vulnerable. We have to remember that our staff, those out taking children safeguarding action in the dark watches of the night... the dark watches of the night, those picking up elderly who have fallen, those who have support, those who support the most vulnerable residents, need to know that they are not victims of an austerity regime, but they are the frontline protecting the most vulnerable at all times. They are those whom we will call upon to catch us when we fall. So it's important that the narrative that we bring to the deal to which the Leader has referred is a positive one. And it's important that we define what those positives are. Because at the moment, and I have to say it, the deal that we're offering our police colleagues, our boroughs and districts, our parish councils and community groups is a bit one-sided. We can't deliver this, how can you help us do it? What we need to do, it seems to me, is carry out a sense of values about how we protect the most vulnerable, how we demonstrate the skills and values of our staff and this council, and how we demonstrate how we can protect those people from the predations of austerity, which they did not bring upon themselves. It seems to me that the importance of the vision is not just what we can expect, but what we can do for our residents. And in that, in that sense, I want to commit ourselves to ensuring that the values of our staff and the values of this council are always to protect the most vulnerable. Now, there's no point in me going over the history of how we got here. Austerity is austerity, and we have missed as a council opportunities to solve some of these problems. But the narrative of victimhood will do us no good, will debase the work that we do out there, and will sap the staff of their confidence. I urge us to restore that and bring something positive to the deal.
Thank you, Mr Harmer.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm seriously concerned about the relationship between central and local government. I think it's reached a point where it's becoming unsustainable in itself as a relationship. I must say, it was interesting that Mr Hodge started by talking about the Learning Disability Agreement, which we struck a number of years ago with the government. I was a member observer at the discussions surrounding that, and I think we have, are actually seriously understating the degree to which the government manipulated the situation against our interests. The agreement was not just for 65 million, but a fraction under it, I think, actually. But the agreement also included that it was indexed, to be indexed against inflation and against demand. My calculation from the latest figures suggests that the amount that would result from that would be well into the 90s of millions, and that would pretty well deal, if we hadn't got zero instead, that would pretty well deal with the amount by which we need to reduce our expenditure next financial year. How do we get out of this breakdown between central and local government? I don't know, but I do believe that that needs to be resolved at the highest level. Of course, Parliament has to remain sovereign, and from that point of view, I understand what Mr Button's getting at. You know, that's inescapable, and those things are going to happen. But nevertheless, the people at large need to understand what is going on in our relationship with central government. Otherwise, we cannot command respect while we deal with the very difficult things we're going to have to deal with. I trust you, Mr Hodge, will be making representations along those sorts of lines.
Thank you, Mr Harmer. I agree with you, Leader. I didn't seek to see, I didn't seek elections as a councillor to reduce services, or just ameliorate the damage caused by cuts in government support to local councils, as that affects the frontline services we can provide and others like us can provide up and down the country. But neither do I accept the poisoned chalice that we have to be choosing between protecting the most vulnerable or looking to the future and investing more in universal services that ensure the wellbeing for all of our young people. The potential for hitting high recycling rates, better bus services, and reducing the environmental impact of our residents is a choice we have to make. We should be doing both of these together, and I think we should be standing up together with councils up and down the country and saying, we shouldn't be forced to make these choices. We need more tax collection in the UK, and we need a government to prioritise giving to local government before other priorities at a national level. Because if we're going to transform how we live across the UK, it's down to us working on the ground to actually make that happen. And I would support you in making that invest-to-save case that doesn't stifle us from focusing opportunities to always look at what we can cut. And I hope that in our, in our budget coming forward in November, we can be brave enough to set out the needs-based budget we need, not just to protect the most vulnerable, but to put the bus services, the recycling, the investments in energy efficiency and renewables and suchlike at the level we need to make sure we play our part, to make sure we deliver at a national level what we need to do.
Thank you, Members. If there's no other questions, I'll call on the Leader to respond.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. First of all, can I start with Mr Harmer's question about government relationship with local government? I'm strongly of the view, I hope I'm not prejudiced in my view, I believe that local government is the most efficient part of national government or any single department. I believe, over the last nine years, local government has stepped up to the plate. It has made huge changes, substantial changes across the piece. But I think we are now looking at a wall in front of us, a wall that is a barrier to how we, local elected members, can make local decisions for local people. I am passionate about the role of a local councillor. Somebody asked me the other day on Sunday, referred to me as an MP, and I had to say, excuse me, I'm not an MP, because in actual fact, I'm a local councillor, like many of you in this room, I suspect all of you in this room, who are passionate about how can we do things for people on the ground. That passion, I do not believe, currently exists at national level. I would probably be slated for saying that, but ladies and gentlemen, I believe that is true. Local government has a role to play, and a big role to play, because it is the most efficient part of government. I've been there. I've been in national government offices. I've been around the Home Office, I've been around the Department of Health, I've been round the various departments lately with my chief executive. I can tell you, I think we have done an awful lot more in local government to get our house in order, and if government departments have done that, I think we'd be in a different situation. Are we fairly funded? No, we're not. And you are quite right, this is not about victimhood, this is about what is fair and correct. When I was the leader of the Conservatives in LGA, I persuaded Greg Clark that before anyone tried to change the funding process, we had to get a fairer funding system right. That, of course, is a huge challenge, excuse me, that's a huge challenge for everyone. But we need to get fairer funding first. Somebody said to me the other day, they're holding another referendum in Scotland. Well, I'm sorry to say this, but the sooner they have their own look after themselves, the better. Why should we continually pump money raised by people in Surrey into Scotland? I'll be criticised, but I don't care, because reality is, we send more money to Scotland, to Northern Ireland and Wales than what we get in England. Look at the books, look at the facts, and you'll find that we do not get our fair funding. How many of you spotted the 234 million quietly passed to Wales government to pay for teachers' increase in costs, in wages? Anybody spot it? I did, one day. The reality is, the relationship between national government and local government needs to be improved. There needs to be respect on both sides for the work we do. We are not responsible for national policies, and I don't believe it's our job to interfere apart from in our own individual way. It's not for us to say the government is doing something wrong, we can all sort that out. But government must learn and must understand that local government is the bedrock of public services in this country. When I look back and see what Joseph Chamberlain achieved in Birmingham nearly 100 years ago, when he put public health to real use and actually sorted out the supply of water and things like that were causing, that was local government who led lots of these things. So I think, and I'm very happy to say, I do believe that government needs to treat local government with greater respect, greater understanding of what we are achieving. And we are right, we should not allow our vulnerable residents to be actually left without proper services. If we were in their position individually, and I know some members in this chamber have family who have those issues, and if we just put ourselves in the, in the situation, we're either a child with disabilities or an adult with learning disabilities, put ourselves in their position, they need our help, we are here to serve them, they are our most vulnerable in our community, and our job must be first and foremost to protect them. So for me, it's about, can our staff step up to the plate? I've seen a change in the last year, and I think that change can go on even further. I look at my chief executive. We have to change the culture, we have to change the direction, we have to become better at saying, yes, I can do that, not know that you cannot do that. Tell me how to do something, not how not to do something. That's what I believe all of us on our side of the house want this council to do, is that correct? So for me, it's very clear, we have to look after people, we have to work better with our local partners, and we have to create deals that will do things differently. We have to stop people saying on the phone, it's not our department, it's not our council. We need people to start answering the phones and say, tell me what the problem is. We should be doing the same, we shouldn't be passing it. We should listen to the customer, listen to our residents, what is the issue? Thank you very much, Mrs Jones. I will now get this sorted, I'll come back to you, or I'll arrange for someone to come back to you, and then do it. We have to stop passing the book to other people. We are all elected. We were elected to look after people. Working better with our district and borough partners, we can do better. I have a great deal of sympathy, Mr Essex, with your concerns about how we're going to balance the budget. Yes, there are going to be issues, and I don't doubt for a minute there probably will be metaphorically blood spilt on the carpet while we debate what's going to happen in the future. Simple facts are, we have to live within our budget. The government may bail out the NHS, but it doesn't bail out local government. What I think is right, that local government has discipline about the money it has. What we need in other public services, dare I say it, that we need much more discipline about the money people are given to actually run services. So for me, it is very clear, we have no, no, no cause that we cannot do this, we have to look. You will have seen the county council network sent a message to government saying that we were one billion short into 27 county councils across the country. One billion short, that's a substantial sum of money. Government can find money for everything, but not for local government. And I think the time has to change when government says, we want to help local government, we want to make a difference, we want to improve the quality of life for local people, and we want to help vulnerable people on the ground. That, to me, should be the message from government to local government. We will step up to the plate, I have no doubt about it. In fact, I would welcome more challenge, I would welcome more opportunity, that we could do more, dare I say it. Could we run the NHS? Yes, please, thank you.
Thank you, Leader. Item eight, Members' Question Time. Members, we've had notice of nine questions, five minutes are permitted per question for supplementary questions, and these must be framed as questions, please, not statements and be relevant to the original question. Question time will be limited to 45 minutes, at which point I will finish the question we are on and close the item. If there are any questions not covered during the 45 minutes, a written answer will be tabled, and Members can, of course, follow up with a relevant cabinet member outside the meeting. So we'll start with question one. Mrs Watson, do you have a supplementary?
Thank you, Chairman, and I'd like to thank the cabinet member for the answer to my question. I'd like to ask a supplementary, which is about Abinger Lane in Abinger Common. It's a single-track road with no pavements and a primary school, and it has a 60 mile per hour speed limit on it. And I'd like to ask the cabinet member whether he considers it appropriate for Abinger Lane to have a 60 mile per hour speed limit on it, which is a higher speed limit than on the A3. Thank you.
Any other supplementaries, Members? No, Mr Kemp.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Difficult for me to comment on an individual road, obviously you haven't been here and haven't visited it. We have a policy in place, the local and joint committees have a system to which to review this, and that is, that is the mechanism. But I'm happy to come down and visit, visit the area with you, Mrs Watson, and actually have a look at that.
Question two, Mr Evans, do you have a supplementary?
Thank you very much, and can I thank the Leader for his response to my question? Does he agree with me that in Northamptonshire, it seemed, looking from afar, that the government and local MPs seem to be, if not content to let Northants collapse, they stood by as it happened? Does the Leader feel that Surrey is getting all the support from on high to prevent that happening here?
Thank you. Any other supplementaries, Members? No, Leader?
I thank Mr Evans for his question, which raises interest in connotations. Northamptonshire, I believe, could have been saved, I believe, had they listened to advice that the LGA were giving them earlier on, when I was at the LGA, we were offered to help. I also believe it was about, how could they have worked better with the district and borough partners? And when you're not working with your district and borough partners, I'm afraid it's a road to suicide. You are not, you are never going to be able to do things. And whether the government stood by and let it happen, I'm not really in a position to answer on that, but I know government departments were really keen to work to try and find solutions. But it's like taking a horse to the trough, if the horse doesn't drink and doesn't take, you can't tell you about it. Whether the government is standing by, Surrey, I'll let you enjoy your own conclusions. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Question three, Mr Button, do you have a supplementary?
Well, thank you, Chairman. I thank the Leader for his answer. My question is, will the Leader please make it possible for greater transparency to be applied to the appointment and retention of consultants on the transformation programme? And will it be possible for PPDC to have some visibility about the contractual terms and salaries of these colleagues? It's important that we do not use interim status as a means to bypass the transparency which PPDC should bring to the employment of these colleagues. Thank you, Chairman.
Members, any other supplementaries? Leader?
Can I thank Mr Button for his question and observations? The PPDC, as you know, have certain responsibilities, and they, they will actually continue to carry those responsibilities out. I'm very clear in my own mind, and I've made it clear to the Chief Executive and the Director for Transformation, that we do need to keep a control and a watch on what is going on, and we will take something to the PTC in due course. Thank you.
Thank you. Question four, Mr Essex.
I'd like to thank the cabinet member for her reply, which I understand to mean the council's restructure leaves one dedicated youth worker per borough and district who can run sessions, supported by part-time assistants who can't. Please, can the cabinet member confirm that vacancy, vacant dedicated youth and community worker posts, including the vacant second youth worker post in Ryke and Banstead as promised before the summer holidays, which has resulted on our Friday night Open Access Youth Club being axed in Red Hill, and confirm that this will, these will be reinstated, and that a dedicated youth and community worker will be in post to lead sessions in, is, sorry, is in post to lead sessions in each of Surrey's districts and boroughs?
Thank you. Supplementary, Leader?
I'll answer, Chairman, if you don't mind. I thank Mr Essex for the more detailed aspects of his question. Be inappropriate for a cabinet member to answer this question that you've just raised. We will take a copy of the transcript and find you an answer within the next 10 days. Thank you.
Thank you. Question five, Mrs Watson, do you have a supplementary? Thank you. Moving to question six, Mr Essex, do you have a supplementary?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the cabinet member for his reply and for the Waste Team's current communication and flat outreach efforts. communication and flat outreach efforts. Please can you confirm that we will invest a save to cut our waste disposable and reverse the reported decline in recycling? And it agrees to me that this is vital if we are to exceed our 70% recycling rate at both our community recycling centres and on doorsteps.
Thank you. Any supplementals? Mr Goodman?
Thank you, Chairman, thank you for the supplementary. I can confirm that we will continue to work with our boroughs and districts to increase the amount of recycling that comes to curbside and at our CRCs. I'd just remind the member that in 1617, in two territories, we had the second highest recycling rate in the country. We have to do more, we will continue to do more, because it's vital that we reduce the cost of waste by recycling more, and that we will do.
Thank you. Question seven, Mrs Watson, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, I'd like to thank the cabinet member for his response. I'd like also confirmation from the cabinet member that the revised policy will do everything possible to protect the public from diseased and dead ash trees and the risk of people being killed and injured, and also that appropriate action is taken to put the policy into effect. Thank you.
Supplementals? No, Mr Goodman?
Yes, and thank you for the question. We were together last week when we saw the damage that this disease is doing to ash. And just to tell members that don't know, it is expected that 95% of all ash trees will go in this country over the next few years, which is really such a shame for such an excellent tree that we've had in this country for years. So Wildlife Trust are taking one approach, which is to do the 30 metres to ensure that no trees fall down into the public way. I spoke to Colin about this, we need to ensure that all that we can do to protect our residents and that will do. But I just think it's a great shame for our wildlife that we're seeing the demise of the ash.
Thank you. Question eight, Mr Essex, do you have a supplemental?
Thank you. Would the cabinet member agree with me that as congestion and carbon emissions from transport are rising, and given a recent cross-party parliamentary report on cycling recommending a spend of £10 per person per year on cycling, and my back of the envelope calculations saying that the answer says that we currently spend a total of £3 per Surrey resident, both on cycling and in the shift to public transport, that we should increase that investment if we are to make transport better?
Thank you, Mr Essex.
I think we've demonstrated with the work that we've done and the EV strategy and the low emission strategy, which we consorted on, that we are really committed to reduce these emissions and to increase the electric cars and to increase the health of people's cycling. We've now got the vast majority of councils in our borough that have actually adopted a policy for cycling. We need to do more, excepted, the issue we have, as we've heard already from the leader, where do we spend our money? We've got choices to make. But I don't think it's just about choices that we make, it is down also to the public to actually cycle more, because it is a great health benefit to them. And what we can do, we will continue to do in terms of encouraging that. But what I would say to the member is that it is not easy in today's times to spend that sort of money, which he would ideally like, on cycling. We have a lot of priorities, decisions to make over the next year.
Thank you. Question nine, Mr Essex, do you have a supplemental?
No, thank you.
Thank you. So that brings to the end questions. Now we turn to page 11 on that same paper, which is 15 additional minutes for members to ask questions of cabinet members based on the previously circulated cabinet member briefings. These will be taken on a first-come, first-served basis. No supplementaries. Anyone want to comment? Yes, Mr Evans?
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask the cabinet member for community services, Mrs Turner-Stewart. She refers in her report to the new fire station currently nearing completion in Spelthorn. I wonder if she could outline what she feels is the level of cover, fire cover that is going to be there, fire engines, pumps, and the crews, and what assurances she can give for the longer-term levels of cover in this fire station? Thank you.
Care to respond?
Thank you, councillor Evans. So we're currently undertaking a very extensive piece of work, currently entirely remodelling the fire service in terms of the integrated risk management plan is being refreshed. We're working with the National Fire Chiefs Council and Her Majesty's inspectors to look at what is exactly is required in terms of outcomes and what we need to be delivering in terms of community protection, prevention, and response within the fire service. So that piece of work is currently underway and will be completed in a matter of weeks, and that will be reported to you in due course. But currently, the fire covering Spelthorn will remain until that piece of work is undertaken. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Turner-Stewart. Mrs Ley?
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to ask, for clarification purposes, if the cabinet member for children is saying within her cabinet member update to full council that there is no longer a waiting list for CAMHS. It states that Surrey and Border's partnership, along with the NHS Mental Health Trust, which runs CAMHS, met all their targets with regards to seeing all children and young people waiting for assessment appointments. If this is the case, I strongly dispute these figures by Surrey and Border Partnership. Only yesterday, at a foster panel, two cases were highlighted, again, where there were issues regarding waiting times for CAMHS. Also, a recent secure review highlighted the problem trying to get a referral for a young person in secure accommodation. The waiting list was 16 weeks. Considering the order for secure accommodation is 12 weeks, this obviously proved totally inadequate. Sadly, I do not have any faith whatsoever in the Surrey and Border's partnership, so I am asking the cabinet member for her clarification. Thank you.
We've got the question. Mrs Curran?
I'd like to thank Mrs Ley for her question, and apologize to her, this council and to you, if anywhere, have misled members into thinking that all is well with our CAMHS service. I had undertaken in the past to update members as to the progress in the CAMHS interim plan, which, as I say in my statement, was a 16-week plan to eliminate the backlog of enormous backlog that had built up in two particular services. And what I hoped to try to convey was the fact that the target to see all those who were in the backlog over the summer had been seen. I do not want to give the impression that there are no longer long waiting times in the CAMHS service, or by any means that the service is, all problems in the service have been solved. I just wanted to reassure members that the purposes of the interim plan had been addressed and that the backlog had been cleared. Members will be aware that our service leaders are concerned about the CAMHS contract that we still have, and by no means, Chairman, have the problems all been addressed. We're working extremely hard with our health partners to do all we can to eliminate such problems and look forward to finding out how that can work better for our children and young people. And as I said at our last meeting, Chairman, to parents and young people, that there are parts of the CAMHS service which do work well, and that I don't in any way want to give the impression that young people who need help should not approach professionals to try to find a service that they require. But I am honest, and we must be honest and confront the fact, that the CAMHS contract that we have is not working well for children and young people, and that we need to do an awful lot in the future to fix it and to recommission in due course.
Thank you, Mrs Curran. Mr Kingston?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I note in the report, it says that, from the cabinet member for children, that it says that Dave Hill has been mandated and his team to take action. Does the cabinet member agree to me that she too has been mandated over the years to oversee a quality and safe service for our children, which she has so significantly failed to do? Having put these in place, does she agree with me that it's time for her to go and for someone else to see the new changes through to their conclusion?
Thank you, Mrs Curran.
I agree that in the Ofsted report, the opening remarks are very difficult to read as lead member, when it says that members and officers were too slow to take action. However, in my professional life, I was not a children's professional, and as far as I am aware, no previous lead members for children's services have been professional children's workers. And I know that the chairman, that the member who has asked that question, is a member of another authority, and he should be well aware of the difference between political leadership and operational management of a service. So as lead member, I have stood before you, as indeed have other lead members, and I have said that politically, we have high ambitions for our children's services. I have now a very high ambition for our children's service. I want those services to no longer be inadequate, no longer requiring improvement, to be good and outstanding, because that's what our children and young people deserve. So to achieve that objective, our new chief executive and our new children's director of, our new director of children's services have put in place a robust and fundamental plan to take action. That is what all of us want him to do. We have given them that mandate. I am completely confident that our new director of children's services and his team of professional children's workers will achieve that. That is not to say that my own personal ambition, our political ambition for our children's services is in any way changed. I make no apology to the member chairman for being politically ambitious for our children's services. I see no reason why I should turn away from that. I am fully confident in the team that we have now actually to go ahead and deliver what we all want for our children and young people in this county.
So that is the end of those questions. Oh, Mr Evans, I will take yours.
If I may, sorry, I just fallen over. A question for Mr Kemp, councillor Kemp, if I may. In his report, he refers to some of the schemes in Surrey and the large-scale patching operations that have taken place. I wonder, does he recall on the 28th of August, a visit to my electoral division of Stanwell and Stanwell Moor, when he looked at some of the very poor sections of roads, and he even stood in the road to be photographed for the local papers? Is he aware that within a matter of a couple of weeks or even days after that, the crews were out there mending those sections of road to a very high standard? And as a miracle worker, is he able to come to the other 23 points in my area? And what could I get in first before the other members get in? Because after his visit, things seem to happen. Thank you.
I'll take that as a question, if you wish. Mr Kemp?
I'm not quite sure I'd answer about that, about being a miracle worker. The school of Harry Pontius, I say yes. But I think, you know, I've gone to a lot of members' areas and tried to support the members, and that's what I've done. I know David Hodge has been up to visit you as well and looked around some of the issues that have gone on on your patch. But I've done that with a lot of members, you know, cross-party, it's about delivery of services to our residents, do the best we can within the budget envelope we've got, and it's about identifying them. You know, our highways officers do a great job as well, we're trying to identify them. But again, they can't be everywhere, so it is about the members highlighting some of these and us doing the best we can. I thank you for your compliment, I think.
The harder you work, the luckier you get. Right, that's item done on to item nine, statements by members on local issues. There are no statements from members, so we can move to item 10. Original motions, 90 minutes for deliberation in total. I've received notice of four original motions. First motion is in standing in the name of David Hodge, the leader, understanding order 12, stop three. Council has to decide if it wishes to debate this motion today. Does council wish to debate this motion now?
We agree.
Thank you. Leader, do you have a second?
I have a second.
Mister?
Yeah, it's Edward.
Mister Hawkins?
Thank you.
Leader, would you like to move the motion now? You have six minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chairman and members. I'm sure everyone in this chamber receives a huge number of emails, phone calls, and letters from residents regarding the state of our roads. That's a fact. It's time for the government to help us. We know we receive, excuse me, 11 million less than similarly side counties, and yet we have some of the busiest roads and one of the heaviest traffic flows in the country, just straight after London. We need help from our Surrey MPs to get the government to listen to our case. So far, the petition has received 7,347 signatures. When I checked this morning, that's not even 8% of the total amount needed to trigger a debate in Parliament. 8% of Surrey residents would trigger a debate. I regret the petition closed on the 2nd of November. There are 850,000 people of voting age in Surrey, and every single one of them uses our public highways in some way or other, whether they drive, cycle, use a bus, or pedestrians. And I call on them, all of them, to send the strongest message to the government by signing this petition. And I appeal to our friends and families to do so. If you look at the petition, you'll see people in Scotland have signed it, yet people in Surrey haven't signed it. We need just one in eight, one in eight people of voting age in the county to sign. Is that too much to ask our residents, who continually send us emails? So I implore everyone in this chamber, everyone, this is not a party political thing, this is about what's right for our residents. And everyone watching at home on the webcast, all of our residents across the county, please support our campaign, sign the petition on behalf of the Surrey residents. Nothing is more important at this moment in time for thousands and thousands of residents, for people with difficulty walking on a highway, walking on a pavement, and for people cycling. We need more money to be spent on Surrey roads. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Chairman, could I thank the Labour Party for their support?
Now there's a first leader. Thank you. So Leader, you have your second. Mister Hawkins, do you wish to second the motion or do you reserve your position?
I wish to second, but I reserve my right to speak later, if I may. Thank you. Sorry, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. So, Mister Townsend?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm happy to support that. I've got a residents' meeting coming up in the next week or so, where there'll be 100 or so residents from my division. I will inform them what to do, exactly what to do, and sign the petition. I thank Colin Kemp, he's one of the people that actually has come to my division on highways issues to support what has been said by Mr Evans. But I do support the motion. I do think there is a severe problem with our roads that can only be sold by funding, and the funding must be done in a fair way. We have less roads than, say, Cornwall and Devon, but the usage of them is probably 10 or 20-fold more. We must do something about it, and very happy to support that.
Thank you. Now that, obviously, the motion is open for debate, but Mister Cooksey, I understand you have an amendment.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I'd like to move the motion that is set out on the paper which has been circulated, and I do have a second.
And who's your second? Mrs White?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I was more than a little surprised to see the leader of the council proposing this motion, which seems a somewhat desperate attempt by the Conservative leadership on this county council to try to influence their own national Conservative leadership. And I believe the motion as it stands to be both unrealistic and irrelevant, and unlikely to make any serious contribution to solving the problem it claims to be concerned about. Unrealistic because it has been available for signature since May, for five months, and by the beginning of October, had collected 7,250 signatures, which is now, I think, 7,352 as of this morning. So it only needs another 92,000 signatures by the 2nd of November in order for it to be put into effect, and there's little likelihood of that happening. be put into effect, and there's little likelihood of that happening. That, of course, raises the question of why has it not received a rush of enthusiastic support? And the reason, I suspect, lies mainly in the fact that it's actually irrelevant. The plight of local government and the unprecedented financial situation that this county and many other local authorities find themselves in is a direct result of Conservative government policy. Conservative government policy, fully supported by Surrey's Conservative MPs, and there only are Conservative MPs in Surrey, many of whom are serving cabinet members. This is their policy, which is hardly likely to be changed by a debate in Parliament, particularly given this government's record of sidelining Parliament on so many important issues. It also prioritizes the state of our roads. How bad as they are, why choose roads to debate in Parliament? Does the administration believe that roads are more important than services for social care, for children, for fire and rescue, and for the environment, all of which are suffering from the same lack of support as our roads are? I certainly don't. To be relevant, this motion should be identifying what county councillors, particularly Conservative county councillors, can do to achieve a better deal for Surrey residents. And a parliamentary debate on roads, even if it were possible, would not achieve that. The reality is that we have a Conservative government pursuing policies that are preventing this Conservative council for delivering the quality and range of services that our residents deserve, and that indeed were promised by many Conservative county councillors when they were elected last year. It's therefore the responsibility of Conservative county councillors to persuade their own colleagues in government to provide a funding system that will allow those services to be delivered. Remember, Conservative county councillors went out at the general election last year in support of Surrey's Conservatives, MPs and cabinet members. And they must have known what Conservative manifesto policies would produce for local government. They're therefore complicit in what's happening, and can only make amends by a determined effort to change the policies that the Conservative government are inflicting on local government in Surrey. Of course, all county councillors should be campaigning to change the system that's being imposed on us by government, but Conservative county councillors have a special responsibility. The message of my amendment is to advise the administration to stop playing the sort of irrelevant games that are implicit in this motion, and start taking some serious action to persuade their own Conservative colleagues and friends in government to change their policies on funding local government in order to protect our residents from the consequences of the devastating cuts that lie ahead if these policies remain in force. Thank you, Chairman.
Mrs White, would you like to second the amendment now? You can. Thank you. Mister Hodge?
Chairman, we will not be supporting this amendment. Very simple reason is, this amendment is about what is right for every single resident in Surrey. This amendment actually turns what was a very straightforward motion into a political football. And I think that some of the Liberal Democrats need to take some lessons from their leader. He's a man of immense integrity and fortitude. I think you, you should learn to listen to him more, in my opinion. I think you may have forgotten, you know, Mister Cooksey, that I can't remember, but who was the government in 2010 to 2050? Was that Conservatives and Liberal Democrats? Yes, it was. And the policy hasn't changed, even under your, even when you and the Liberal Democrats were part of government. I'm disappointed, Chairman, that this amendment has been turned into a political football. This, this motion was put there for the benefit of everyone, and I'd hoped that we could all get on and do this for the benefit of Surrey residents, and not turn it into a political football. Thank you.
Thank you, leader. Mister O'Reilly?
Thank you, Chairman, and I just want to, as a humble back bench here, endorse everything that Mister Hodge has just said. The real failing point, and it's been said time and time again, but third time of saying is no harm, is in this of councillor Cooksey, Mister Cooksey's amendment, of any political group in this council, Green, Labour, Resident Association, all of them may have a point if they were to oppose it, but the one group that cannot, in all credibility, oppose, oppose what this administration is doing is the Liberal Democrats. And the reason is quite simple. We go back to February, the budget, when this council bravely, courageously, and possibly unpopular, put up the council tax, three percent for normal services, three percent, absolutely vital three percent, 21 million pounds towards adult social care. The Liberal Democrats, who are now shedding crocodile tears about funding, they opposed that budget. They opposed 21 million for adult social care and 21 million on the other services that this council provides. How on earth can they come to this council now with any credibility and move a motion that, and move an amendment that should be swept out and support the substantive motion?
Thank you, Mister O'Reilly. Mister Harrison?
Thank you, Chairman. Not having served, supported either of these two governments, the last one or this one, it would seem to me that councillor Cooksey has a very far fair point when looking at and listening to the leader's opening speech about the 90 million short of funding. So it does seem to me to be, of course, it's a political point, this is about politics, but it does seem to me to be a very far fair point. Why shouldn't councillors, particularly the Conservatives, lobby their MP? I rest my case.
Thank you, Mister Harrison. Mister Kemp?
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I actually find the amendment a little bit insulting, I have to say. This is the duty of every councillor to, to respond and, and support every resident in getting this work done. Yes, we work with our MPs and trying to get things changed, but this is about taking it a step further. The petition that Edward put forward is about getting that debated in a public arena. And when an amendment says it seems unlikely that a debate is going to do any good, what sort of message is that sending to our residents? You know, this was a pure unpolitical motion that was originally put forward, and as I said, this is turning into a political football. This is not about politics, this is about trying to identify services. And actually, we should be having the individual conversations about the individual elements, trying to look at the whole picture. You know, this is making a mockery of what this is trying to do, you know, and I, I really hope that we could actually go back to the original motion and actually get this done, and actually get the message out to our residents that this needs signing. We need to get these numbered up. If I look at my inbox, the amount of emails I get about highways issues, I would have expected the whole of Surrey to sign this, so I'm really surprised. And this is about getting it back out into the public arena again.
Thank you, Mister Kemp. Mister Harmer?
Thank you, Chairman. I, I think this is a confused amendment, and I put it to Mister Cooksey and Mrs White, for whom I had the greatest respect, that they're arguing the case for rate support grant, when actually, this is a specific grant for transport, for roads. And if, if they were proposing a separate motion entirely about what they're saying here, that would be perfectly justifiable, and they might find that we agree with him, them, sorry. This is a different issue. This is very specific to how government funds specifically roads. So if this is changed, it'll make any difference to adult social care, it doesn't make any difference to any of the other things that we worry about. And so I think it's, it's almost an out of order amendment because it's dealing with something that is a completely different subject. However, I'm not pushing that, Chairman. I just made the general point.
Thank you, Mister Harmer. If there's no other debate, I call Mrs White, the second.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, why is it that when the Conservatives are on the back foot on something, they always claim that other people are being party political? I would point out that the leader himself has occasionally been party political in this chamber. And I will say that when I first saw the petition online, I actually put on my Facebook page encouraging my residents to sign it, on the basis that we needed more money for Surrey's roads. Unfortunately, I didn't keep the responses that I got, and I probably couldn't read some of them out in the council chamber anyway. They were not complimentary to this council. I've also urged my residents to contact Guildford's MP to explain to her the difficulties that were being caused by the lack of government funding for local government per se, not just for roads. I don't know how many did. Doesn't look as if she's been listening very much. This amendment, as has been said, refers specifically to road maintenance and improvements, and I sympathize with that. But the speeches this morning, especially by the leader, make it clear that we need extra money to be able to fund all our essential services, including social care, children's services and environment services. To single out one element does not give taxpayers the full picture. I, I had a look, like other people have, at the petition this morning. I noticed somebody from the Outer Hebrides has signed it, but presumably that was before the council leader's comments this morning about the funding for Scottish government. When it comes to opposition to the budget, councillor O'Reilly, if a budget came to this council that detailed exactly how the budget was going to impact on the various services, it would be easier to know whether or not to support it. And can I point out, there are parents who are taking this council to the High Court because of that very lack of detail in the budget. Having said all that, I don't believe the leader of this council is lacking in compassion. I don't think his party colleagues are lacking in compassion, which is why I was surprised that this motion is limited to roads. But you know, you really can't be blaming the government without recognizing that it is the Conservative government. You keep supporting them, but they're starving us of funds. The leader this morning referred to needing to work in partnership with other people, and certainly that is the only way we're going to get out of this, but those partners are also being starved of funds.
Thank you, Mrs White. I think your time is up.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, and I call Mister Cooksey to make his concluding remarks.
No, Chairman, I have no further comment.
Thank you. In that case, we'll move to the vote. So all those in favor, put up your hand and press yes on the button. And this is about the amendment only. So these are all those in favor. Have you pressed your buttons? Some have, some haven't. Thank you. Now I can see some have, some haven't. And now all those against? And press your buttons, please. No buttons, of course. Thank you. And now, any abstentions? Thank you. Now we have the results, 16 for, 51 against, one abstention, so the amendment is lost. We move to the main motion and carry on debate. Does anyone want to speak to the main motion? Mister Harrison?
Just to say, Chairman, I have voted for this petition.
Thank you, Chairman. I started this petition, yes, I'm a Conservative, I'm also a community councillor, I'm a Surrey resident, and I have been for many, many years. I've even played rugby in Ashdod and faraway places. I lived in, I dare, I don't know if I dare say it, I lived in Epsom and Yor for want, for a period of time, before I saw the lights and left. Don't worry, you're safe on that score. I started it to help residents. I've spoken boringly at length in this chamber about this petition, stalling all, everybody to support it. Interestingly, yes, I've been monitoring the figures, I'm sad I have a spreadsheet of week on week. The highest number of votes, support, has come from East Surrey. I don't know who represents there, but that's only, excuse me, 1.12% of the electorate. Guildford, 0.51%, that's worked before. Woking, 0.34%. Oh, Epsom and Yor, 0.33%. But I have done this because I felt strongly, from in the limited time that I've been a councillor, that it was an issue that concerned the residents. It's not political. There's no mention of my status as Conservative councillor on the website. It is a petition for everybody in this county and beyond, all the people that travel that complain about our roads, it is a petition for all of that. I suppose I've been a councillor in a different environment long enough, and I'm afraid, you know, to hear we're politicizing it. I haven't bothered to count up the number of times Conservative is mentioned on Mister Cooksey's motion, which fortuitously has been lost. But I have been a borough councillor, and I suppose I have to accept, because I've seen it before, getting near a vote on a time when there's a, you know, the Liberals jump on a bandwagon, we're used to this, and that is exactly what they've done here. What they've failed to note is, the Transport Select Committee have looked at this motion. Now, I'm going to claim credit for that, because nobody here can say otherwise, so unless somebody can bring forward and prove it wasn't you, it's my motion that's gone to the Transport Select Committee, and I know the Surrey County Council has made representation to that Transport Select Committee. I thought 100,000, that was going to be a pushover, it hasn't worked, but the next level is 10,000. If we really push to get 10,000 votes, not many more, we can all do it, within the next three weeks, we can get a ministerial statement. So we should be going to that, and I therefore urge everybody to support the motion by the leader. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mister Hawkins. Leader, would you make some concluding remarks?
Chairman, thank you for allowing me to sum up. I put a lot of thought into this motion, and Edward and I went through it very carefully. There's not a single word about any political party in it that I thought was the right thing to do. And I'll read the recommendation of the motion. I call upon all members of this council to support the petition, all members, not just the Conservatives, but we Conservatives will take our lesson out to the public, that when it came to the crunch, when we asked you to support us on this petition, you failed, you categorically failed. So my question is, Chairman, is when I look at Mister Cooksey's amendment, he actually only called upon the Conservative councillors. This council represents every single resident, and that everyone should support this motion, because this is about what's right for Surrey people. When we forget that we're looking after Surrey people, the vulnerable people, the people who are blind, if anyone notices blind person trying to walk on our streets, it's really difficult, or we're partially sighted. You have to understand, when ladies are walking around or men are walking around with their prams and things, it's quite difficult getting around sometimes. We need this funding so we can have our roads done properly, effectively, over a period of time. It would make a significant difference to the, to the public in Surrey. I'm delighted as a Conservative, and I never put it on here, but I am delighted, Mister Chairman, because Mister Cooksey's brought politics in, I'm delighted to stand here as a Conservative leader to say we are prepared to stand together and ask the government to look at our funding. We just need 80-odd thousand of the residents to do the same. It cannot be impossible, and I call upon all residents, and I hope the newspapers pick this up, the television cameras pick it up, and let's have everyone in Surrey, just on one time, standing up and saying, we will sign the petition, we in Surrey will recognize that our county council wants to do better, and that way, 11 million will make a huge difference on all our roads. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, leader. So we'll move now to the vote. All those in favor, put up your hand and press yes on the button in front of you. That is gone. That is gone.
Mr Cooksey, what are you doing?
Thank you. At least the Labour Party supported it.
And the results, sixty-one for, none against, and nine abstentions, so the motion is carried.
Second motion is standing in the name of Mr Goodwin. I'm standing with the Rocking, County five, side of the motion today. Is councillor going to debate the motion now?
Happy to, Chairman.
So I'm hearing General Chris Cates, and we'll move to debate the motion. Mr Goodman, do you have a second?
Yes, I do, Nick.
And who is the second? Thank you. Mr Goodman, you have six minutes to speak.
Thank you, Chairman. Over twenty years ago, the then government started to consider a third runway. In the last twenty years, there has been much debate locally and nationally, and we have debated the issue of airport expansion a number of times, with the last one in 2016. This came after the publication of the Davis Commission and government's public position to support a new runway at Heathrow. That motion reaffirmed the position proposed previously by Peter Martin in 2013, reiterating that expansion requires that the environmental and service access issues involved to be satisfactorily addressed and to work with government. It is now timely after Parliament has supported the expansion of Heathrow and the Airport National Policy Statement designated that this council debates this issue again and work with districts and boroughs together to support and protect our residents. The economy of Surrey with a GVA in excess of 40 billion per year is one of the economic engines of the UK economy. Our residents tell us they love to live here. New residents are drawn here. There are some 60,000 businesses based in Surrey, there are some 250 large national and international headquarters or substantial offices located here in this county. BP has their second largest office in the world, located in Sunbury. Two hundred and two of the top 300 companies in the UK are clustered within 25 miles of Heathrow, and it is estimated that thousands of new jobs and apprenticeships will be created with a third runway. Now, there have been several member seminars at County Hall and several events sponsored by Heathrow, but it is essential that we keep members up to date as expansion plans evolve. And I will be holding a further member seminar on the 4th of February to consider Heathrow's master plan along with noise and flight paths. The Heathrow Strategic Planning Group was formed last year, and at that time included 13 local authorities, although this number continues to grow. It currently includes the County Council, Spelthorn, Runnymede and Elmbridge. The group, although funded by Heathrow, is independent and with the responsibility to hold Heathrow accountable and help shape Heathrow's third runway proposals. The group focuses on planning, public health, green and blue infrastructure and economic development. Earlier this year, the group gave important evidence to the government's Transport Select Committee when they took evidence at Heathrow. Now, a red line for this council is a southern rail access. Many of you will recall that we should have had a southern rail access into Terminal Five, yet this did not happen. The government Transport Select Committee are supporting the case for a southern rail access to be in place prior to the completion of the third runway, and we will continue to work to make this happen. And I'm encouraged that Chris Gray, and as I already asked for expression of interest for a southern rail access, with a number of schemes being put forward. It is for the government to decide which scheme is supported. I ask the government to decide as soon as possible so the planning work can start and be completed before the third runway is operational. We must have the right road infrastructure agreed and in place to support the new runway, and this must include local roads as well as motorways. The develop and master plan must take into consideration a number of concerns already expressed, and the fact that the Transport Select Committee approved that any airport expansion must be completed without increasing the net airport-related traffic, a target supported by Heathrow. Expansion poses several environmental issues, in particular the effect on green space, habitat, flooding and air pollution. Through the HSPG, we will continue to press for the right solutions and outcomes. There is already an air pollution issue at the airport, much to do with road traffic, something that must, must be addressed. We need to explore more sustainable journeys alternatives and to make buses less polluting through hydrogen or electric power, alongside similar work with taxis. This work is essential. The newly formed Heathrow Community Engagement Board is an independent board that will listen to residents and will be independently chaired, and I'm pleased to confirm that I have been asked to represent Surrey council and residents on this board. This is a major step to ensure the concerns and views of our residents are heard on issues that concern them, be it noise, air pollution or compensation claims. Over 2.6 billion compensation will be available to support homes, schools and other buildings worse affected. It is essential that the money is allocated effectively and appropriately. The area worst affected is Stanwell and Stanwell Moor, and I will do all I can and work with Robert Evans to achieve the best outcome for his residents. There are some other areas of Surrey that will be impacted, and this will be dependent on the actual flight pass, who will eventually be agreed by Heathrow. It is essential that we get the best outcomes for our residents. In finishing, Mr Chairman, we must continue to work with Heathrow, with our borough and district partners, to agree the detail of the mitigation measures that will make airport expansion a success, to support the economy of Surrey and the wider UK, whilst securing appropriate financial commitments from the airport, so that mitigation is in place and our residents are protected before any third runway is operation. This is a once-in-a-lifetime scheme and opportunity that we must seize, and I hope everybody will support the motion.
Thank you, Mr Goodman. Mr Darby, do you wish to second the motion or reserve your position? Members, the motion is now open for debate. I've got Mrs Mooney.
Thank you, Chairman. I commend councillor Goodman for his clear and concise motion to the chamber, reaffirming the county council's position on Heathrow Airport's expansion. As you will know, Chairman, I am a serving borough councillor for Ashford North and Stanwell South. Spelthorn Borough Council also supports the expansion of the airport for economic reasons, but whilst acknowledging that the expansion will impact on residents' day-to-day lives. The second consultation phase is not out yet, and plans are moving all the time, but there are several things that will need to happen. Road infrastructures will need to be in place well before the runway is operational. This will need to include active monitoring of the local road network population, as the roads in this part of Spelthorn will have an increased volume of traffic. Railway options would need to include a southern light railway, as proposed the Department of Transport by Spelthorn Borough Council. This will have a much lesser impact on residents and the environment, and will directly support at least one of Surrey's 11 districts and boroughs. Community legacy benefits must also be considered and confirmed, as green spaces will be lost with the expansion. These must include the ongoing protection of Staines Moor and the provision of alternative high-quality open areas in return for the loss of these green spaces. In addition, I note councillor Goodman's motion includes reference to proper compensation for residents affected by the expansion plans. It may be of interest to those here today, the Spelthorn Borough Council have called for the whole of Stanwell Moor and parts of Stanwell to be covered by a wider property offer zone. By way of summary, Chairman, I fully support Mr Goodman's motion and recommend to the chamber that we get behind it and reaffirm the council's position on the airport expansion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs Mooney. Mr Robert Evans.
Thank you very much, and I've read this motion with interest. Members will know that I've long had reservations about Heathrow expansion for reasons which are well documented and about which I've spoken before in this chamber. Can I thank councillor Mooney for her comments there, which has preempted some of the things that I spoke. But a number of members here were at the Spelthorn Joint Committee last night when we had a presentation from explaining the details of it, and I think all members there would have been alarmed and concerned about the implications of the airport expansion and the creeping onto the boundaries of not just my division but the whole of Spelthorn. And if you haven't looked at it, it is really quite intense. My electoral division borders the airport and others in Spelthorn are obviously very close. They are talking of building on a bit of greenbelt land behind Stanwell Village Hall, the largest, I think it was quite the largest car park in the world. So, you know, this is why people are concerned. And we know, because I've spoken about it and others before, that the bus services in the north of the county and elsewhere in the county have been reduced over the last few years through lack of funding and not being well used, but the result of that has been a huge rise in the number of private cars going to Heathrow Airport, and I'm sure each one of us, me included, has used either a private car or a minicab to go to the airport. I don't use Ubers, but I've also been on the bus, and I can tell you it takes a long time to go on the 555 bus, so I understand why people take minicabs. But this is really clogging up the roads around Heathrow Airport, and the implications of this are that unless this increased public transport grounded access is improved, as councillor Mooney has outlined, there will be possible gridlock around Spelthorn and other boroughs closer to the airport. For as long as I can remember, there have been calls for better public transport links to Heathrow from the south. They were promised when Terminal Four was built, they were promised when Terminal Five was built, and they're spoken about now. I very much hope that the points that councillor Goodman has raised here are pushed through, and certainly I echo what councillor Mooney has said about compensation for residents who I think will suffer enormously if things go ahead as they are planned at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Essex.
Thank you. This motion starts by saying that it is timely for Surrey County Council to reaffirm its commitment to aviation expansion at Heathrow. You know, I mean, I accept the latter two bullet points of your motion, and the need to call out the often approach that you approve big things first and then you deal with the details and the consequences later, which would adversely affect Surrey residents if we were to allow Heathrow to go in that way forwards. And, you know, but when the proposer of this motion said that we need to explore more sustainable journey alternatives in his introduction, I think we must go beyond looking at just the public transport links to the airport in Surrey, but we need to look at the alternatives to flying in the first place. Yesterday, climate scientists reported how climate science has moved on, that a change in big investment decisions like this are required to end small island states and low-line countries a right to a life. The airports commission was based on a two-degree safe limit for global warming, something that hasn't yet been mentioned in this debate. The scientists say that this is now 1.5 degrees above pre-industrial temperatures. It is now time for a Plan B. We need better investment choices, not an acceptance that our infrastructure, including Gatwick or Heathrow, get bigger and bigger. We need to accept that we're big enough already. As the proposer of this motion has already confirmed today, Surrey's transport missions are once more on the up. This doesn't include flights from Heathrow, which is just outside of Surrey, but this will also make congestion and air pollution on our roads worse, as has already been stated. I think we need to think about whether this motion is indeed timely, as the proposer state. I therefore ask politely that you think twice before voting for this motion and join me in opposing it. Mohamed, Hannah, Emily, Greta. I say this thinking of you, and I urge this council to give us all, including you, grounds for hope.
Thank you, Mr Botton.
I'm grateful to be able to talk about the issues around Heathrow for my residents in Caterham Hill, which is probably as far as you can get from Heathrow in Surrey, but will be adversely affected by the growth and will be significantly affected by the inadequate infrastructure about which we've already heard. I am concerned that some options around Heathrow have not been properly explored, and I wonder if I could ask Mr Goodman if he'd be prepared to take these up at his committee. The first one is there are 1.7 million metric tonnes of cargo movements from Heathrow, and I fail to understand why they need to go to Heathrow at all, and I'd like to know why they can't go to some of the airports in the Midlands or military airports to be spread around the motorway network, thereby freeing up capacity for passengers at Heathrow and possibly obviating the urgent need for expansion. I wonder if we can't look at moving more of the short haul movements from Heathrow to other airports so that we can make sure that Heathrow serves its principal purpose that the airport seeks, which is to be an international transit hub. I am concerned that my residents will suffer hugely by the impact on the M25. I'm concerned that actually the biggest car park is not the one at Heathrow that's proposed, but actually the M25 itself, and we spend far too long sat on it, and the adaptations needed to accommodate an extra runway at Heathrow will significantly inconvenience the residents I serve. I therefore ask Mr Goodman if he would take those points away and see if there is any mileage in what I've suggested. I welcome the call for infrastructure, because the other point that my residents continually make to me is that there are always promises about infrastructure before any development, but the promises are never delivered. And we suffer in Caterham from one of the worst railway services in Britain. It is shameful, and the options for public transport to get to Heathrow, should we have to do so, are very poor indeed. So those are the important issues to my residents, and I thank Mr Goodman for the opportunity to make them.
Thank you, Mr Walsh.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I stand as chairman of the Spelthorn Joint Committee, and Spelthorn, as you have already heard, is going to be the most effective borough by this expansion. I was interested just to let you know what the largest car park means, and that is 20 to 25,000 vehicles. I can't imagine it. The biggest car park I can only imagine is the Disney American-type car parks, but if it's going to be even bigger than that, then I don't think there'll be much of Spelthorn As has been pointed out, we had the idea come up at our joint committee last night, and very much support Mr Goodman and the motions here of these six points that you put down. I would ask that you bear in mind that Spelthorn Borough Council have a very good suggestion about a light railway option instead of a whole southern rail situation, and that possibly is a third of the cost. And I would therefore also say to ask you to very much work hand in heart with Spelthorn, which is really what our joint committee does, together to see if we can come up with solutions and results which are right. And then just finally, I'd like to say to councillor Bottom, having worked in the airfreight and sea freight business all my life, forty years, the problem comes that every one of those aircraft that takes off with passengers in it, the lower half of the aeroplane is full of freight cargo. And so if you didn't put freight cargo in there, because you can't put human beings in there, because there's not enough space obviously for them, then the cost of running those aircraft and everything with just passengers in would be phenomenal. So that is actually the basic answer, I'm sorry to say, but it is something that I fully agree with you. We need to try and get better so that it doesn't affect our residents so much. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Tim Evans.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I too was at the Spelthorn Joint Committee last night to listen to the president. I too was at the Spelthorn Joint Committee last night and listened to the presentation with regard to Heathrow. I really have to apologise to my namesake, Mr Evans, because I find myself yet again in agreement with him, and he finds that very troubling when he has somebody on the other side of the house who actually agrees with what he said. We all share the alarm. Most of the points have been raised. The point that I make, two more points. One is that actually, all we can do is influence events. We can't actually change events. This is a government decision, and all we can do is put forward our thoughts and our considerations and our very, very considerable concerns, because Spelthorn is obviously the place that is most affected by this. Stanwell more first and foremost. But I can tell Mr Evans, if you want to get a 555 from Stanwell, that's one thing. You try and get it from Sunbury, you could be travelling for days before you reach Heathrow. So it's not a very good... So I do support all the things that have been said. I will just say more power to your elbow, Mr Goodman. I think this is a very important motion. We must push everything through, and I do also endorse what councillor Walsh has said with regard to a sudden light railway. Do talk to the Spelthorn Borough Council. They are directly affected. We need to work on this together. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Okay. The final speaker, Mrs Turner-Stewart.
Thank you, Chairman. As my colleagues have informed you, we were all quite alarmed when we saw the presentation relating to the Heathrow expansion yesterday, particularly the impact on all of the roads relating to the development. The runway that is at the north is displacing a huge number of car parks which have been referred to, 25,000 cars. But we need to consider the fact that those cars, there'll be a lot of churn with those cars, so the multiples will be magnified considerably. And I would ask councillor Goodman to please bring those statistics to the February presentation because the M3, the M25, all of these roads will be impacted considerably. And I think all of us, representing all of our boroughs within Surrey, need to be fully informed before we proceed. We need to work together because I think this is a very, very strong case that's obviously been presented, and we need to understand completely the impacts on Surrey. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move to Mr Darby. Would you like to second the motion now?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm delighted to support this motion. I'd like to concentrate, if I may, on particular parts of paragraphs five and six, but it applies throughout, and basically that everything should be in place before the third runway comes into operation. I was fortunate enough to be invited to and able to attend a meeting at Heathrow at their invitation some months ago. Mr Goodman was present at the time and various others of county councillors here today. It was very clear from what was said that Heathrow have very clear plans, exactly where the runway will go, how the compensation will be dealt with, encouragement of cleaner aircraft. They referred to quieter aircraft as well. It's just in the side, but I don't think aircraft are quiet or ever will be. And they referred to reduced landing charges for the more modern cleaner aircraft. All good stuff. But there wasn't much reference to the transport infrastructure and particular the rail link to the south and south west. It was clear that there was no commitment. They said they were talking to various potential providers, and Chris Grayling is apparently talking regarding light rail links and suchlike to the south. It was all a little bit vague, nothing specific. So when it came to questions, I asked specifically whether they would be happy with a planning condition so that they would not operate the runway until everything was in place. And it was clear that they did not intend to agree that. That worries me. It's not surprising. But what does it mean if it isn't coordinated properly? More traffic, more pollution, clogged roads, we've already heard that, junctions 13 and 14 on the M25 at their usual standstill but even longer to clear. Air quality is not just aircraft. We've heard a lot about climate change as well, very recently obviously. There's extra road maintenance for those in Surrey, and more cost for Surrey residents. We've heard an awful lot today about fair funding. And what we need, and what has been said already, is infrastructure, and we need it in advance. Nothing operating till that's in place. Assurances are not enough. We've heard why many times today already. Examples of where it doesn't quite seem to work. HS2, we can have different debaters to whether that's a good idea, but the new chair, I think, of the National Infrastructure Commission, writing in the Sunday Telegraph within the last month, has said it's all very well having HS2, but unless we get the transport infrastructure right at where it goes to, we're wasting our money. Very similar here. In the south east, we are intended now to be building numerous more houses. That's obviously a good idea, in the right place at the right cost. But we've been and listened at member seminars frequently, and we've agreed that our infrastructure is creaking. There are huge resident concerns about that. So what we need is the infrastructure in place and fully funded before the runway comes into operation. And on that basis, I'm delighted to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr Darby. And Mr Goodman, would you care to sum up?
Yes, and thank all members for their contribution, and thank you, Nick, for yours. I totally agree, and I'll start from there. We need the infrastructure in before the runway is operational, and I think that's absolutely essential. But I want to start with Jonathan Essex's comment about the word timely. The reason it's timely is because we want to be inside the camp influencing, not outside the camp. And this is from looking after our residents, to the infrastructure, et cetera. If we don't embrace this and work with the HSPG, Heathrow, and the community board, then we will not get the best deal for our residents. And that is absolutely essential, that we get the best deal for our residents and the motorists. And we must ensure, and I will make it sure, that we do that for Surrey, because I think it's really important. Regarding rail, I am aware of all the... There are six or seven now that Chris Grayling is looking at, and I'm fully aware of the Spelthorn one. And what I'm urging, I said in my speech, we need to make a decision sooner rather than later. Because if we don't, you won't have it in before the third runway, because with planning and building, it will take several years to do. So we need to get that in as soon as possible. I take the point on board about pollution levels, and I think it's really important that we work really hard on that. The comment about the car park, we've already made our views known on the master plan, and I think a 25,000 car park is not the most sensible things to suggest. So we have commented on all this. In finishing, what I will say to members, we will make sure we keep informed of all progress. If you wish me to send the minutes of the HPG minutes out to you, which we meet every month, and we've got a summit next week, I'm quite happy to do that. If anybody's got any concerns they have over the next few years in what Heathrow is doing, please contact me and I'll be happy to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Goodman. So, members, we now move to the vote. All those in favour, put up your hand and press yes on the button in front of you. Oh, that's excellent. Thank you. All those against, put up your hand and press no. All those abstaining, put up your hand and press abstain. Excellent. I think I take that as a unanimous 68 vote. Oh, one abstention. My apologies. Against. My apologies. One against. Almost. So I declare that in favour. On to the third motion, standing in the name of Mr Robert Evans. A revised version of this amendment has been circulated. Understanding Order 12.3, council has to decide if it wishes to debate this motion today. Does council wish to debate this motion now?
Chairman, I'm happy to go straight to the amended motion.
Oh, thank you. In that case, Mr Evans, do you have a second there? Mr Essex, would you like to move the motion? You have six minutes to speak.
Thank you very much, and thank you, colleagues. Most of us imagined slavery as an injustice, thankfully, well in the past. We think of Abraham Lincoln and the American Civil War in the 1860s, or William Wilberforce, who led the abolition movement in this country earlier still at the end of the 18th century. However, the reality is there are more people in conditions of slavery today than ever before. Modern slavery is an unseen crime, hidden in takeaway food shops, hotels, car washes, nail bars, and in private homes. There's no typical victim of slavery. The victims can be men, women, children of any age, but it is normally more prevalent amongst the most vulnerable, the minorities or socially excluded groups within our society. The broad categories of modern slavery include those who are being forced to work or are owned or controlled by an employer. They may have been bought or sold, physically constrained, and subject to mental or physical abuse. It also covers child sexual or criminal exploitation and forced or early marriage. People think of it as something that happened years ago, certainly not today and certainly not within the leafy streets of Surrey. Those are not my words, colleagues, but those are the Detective Superintendent Karomitz of Surrey Police. Now whilst I admit I've never been in a nail bar myself, I've been in takeaway foods, car and car washes, and I know from car washes is sometimes perhaps only one person who speaks English well enough to tell you what's going on and how much you've got to pay. And victims in this country will often have been trafficked to this country with false promises, many unable to speak English, and then their passports and tickets are confiscated with threats that if they try to escape, they or their families will be harmed. An estimate suggests that there are some 40 million people. That's why I said the figure more than ever. Forty million people worldwide who are victims of modern slavery, and it's estimated some 13,000 in this country. And it's an issue that could be going on in any one of our electoral divisions. Surrey Police have already made arrests in Sunbury, Walton-on-Thames, and Hawley, and probably elsewhere. And we know that the signs are often hidden. The signs of modern slavery make it difficult to spot victims, but it's closer than you think, and I believe that we as a council need to recognise our role and our responsibilities. Under the Modern Slavery Act passed in 2015, this council has a duty to notify the Secretary of State of any individual encountered in Surrey who they believe is a suspected victim of slavery or human trafficking. This duty is there not just to gather statistics and paint a more accurate picture of the scale of the problem, but so that it can be addressed. It's better to report a possible victim and to apologise and to be sorry rather than to ignore a situation where somebody is suffering. The amendments that I've tabled to my own motion, well, I hope ensure that council across the chamber will be able to accept this motion. And I'd like to thank the leader personally and his staff for their support and cooperation of we've tried to work to make sure we can get a motion that is sensible, coherent, and works for this council. And by passing this motion, colleagues, you will be accepting the reality of a sad aspect of today's world and agreeing that we will try and do whatever we can as a council to make it the situation better in Surrey. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Evans. Mr Essex, do you wish to second the motion or reserve your position?
I would so far.
Thank you. So, members, the motion is now open to debate. I call Mr Hodge.
Yeah, I've got him. Thanks. Thanks. Chairman, I'd like to publicly support Mr Evans in everything that he has said. He is absolutely right. Modern slavery is a disgrace. It's a scourge on our society. Why should individuals be treated differently to us? We should treat all individuals with dignity and allow them to have a proper workplace, to pay proper taxes, pay proper insurance, so they become proper parts of our society. And those who actually are the instigators and who hold these people down in those situations, I believe we should have the strongest laws possible to give them the strongest punishment and to discourage people from doing it. I'm totally in support of it, and I know my members here completely back this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Bennison.
Thank you, Chairman. I totally support the motion anyway. The only thing I'd like to say on it is that domestic violence and domestic abuse and financial abuse, it's all part of what you've said. I know that there are things about the slavery. I feel very strongly, when I wrote my book, which is Return of the Revenge of the Seven Magnificent Women, it covers that problem that you've got already, and I'm 100% behind you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Bennison. That'll be £5 towards the charity. Mrs White.
Thank you, Chairman. Can I be clear also, right from the start, that I support this motion and I will be voting for it? And I'd also like to pay tribute to the government for bringing in the Modern Slavery Act 2015. It's a very important piece of legislation. I don't have time to do a long speech on the subject, so I will concentrate particularly on the exploitation of children and young people. And I was very pleased to hear about the recent conviction of a man from Birmingham for using three children for so-called county lines drug dealing. It's described as a landmark case, and I hope there will be many more until that particular evil is stamped out. While I was having a look at some of the details of that, Chairman, I also noticed a story of a young girl who went missing. She'd been groomed and then enslaved and was travelling in her sports uniform to a town with a bag full of Class A drugs. She was given sales targets by her boss, a 48-year-old gang leader, and if she failed to meet them, she was beaten or sexually abused. At the time the article was written, he was still not in custody. I hope that will be remedied very shortly because the details of the case are really quite harrowing, and what that young girl went through is unimaginable. Children in care are a key source of child slavery in the UK. They're vulnerable and easily lured in with affection shown by the "boyfriend", close quotes, bought presents, alcohol, then drugs, and so on. Of course, the victims are not only children. They can be any vulnerable person who can be manipulated and abused. Many of them come into contact with various services, not just the police, but health professionals, social workers, and the voluntary sector and others. It's essential that people in all the services who deal with voluntary people, with vulnerable people, are trained to make sure that they recognise modern slavery and they know what steps to take to protect the victims and bring the perpetrators to justice. The young girls in Birmingham were not benefiting from their activities. They were hungry and living alongside drug dealers in squalid conditions. After the initial grooming, the young girl did not get rewards from her boss. She was abused by him and his friends, and we must put a stop to this. Thank you, Chairman.
Mr Essex, would you like to second the motion now?
Thank you. I'll be brief. The worst instance of modern slavery I'm aware of in Surrey is the so-called county lines drug running, where children are trafficked as they traffic drugs and often become addicted and enter crime as a result. Yesterday, The Times reported how Bradford had been given 2.5 million pounds to fight the drug trade, which has reportedly enslaved nearly 500 local children. This is an issue up and down the country, including here in Surrey. So I'd urge you all to support this motion and the set of actions that it commits us to deliver on here in Surrey. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Evans, would you like to wrap up?
Well, I'd just thank for what seems to be very widespread support, which is not something I'm used to, Chair, but I think I look forward to seeing it coming into practice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Evans. So, members, we now move to the vote. All those in favour, put up your hand and press yes on the button in front of you. Understanding Order 12.3, council has to decide whether it wishes to debate this motion today. Does the council wish to debate the motion now? Leader.
Chairman, no, for the very simple reason this is a matter that should be dealt with by the planning committee, as the members around this chamber are not qualified in terms of having done the planning training that is required before you make any comments in planning matters. I therefore suggest that this is referred to Mr Hall's committee, and at some time, due course, he can then tell this council what his agrees.
Members, understanding Order 12.3, before the council votes on whether to refer it, the proposer of the original motion has the right to make a statement of up to two minutes as to why it should not be referred, and the leader shall have the right to respond for up to two minutes. I shall then put the question of referral to the vote. So, Mr Essex, as proposer of the original motion, I invite you to make a statement as to why it should not be referred. as to why it should not be referred.
Thank you. It depends when it goes to the planning committee. This is a current consultation by the government, which closes in October, so I'm going to speak briefly why I support this motion on the basis that it's heard by the planning committee next Tuesday. Our role is to provide... Sorry? Next Wednesday? Wednesday, sorry. Got my days in a twizzle. We as Surrey are the minerals planning authority and take responsibility for what's allowed in our countryside. The proposals for fast-tracking are not for particular oil extraction here that's proposed in Surrey now, but under secondary legislation could expand to it. I don't think it's necessary for this to go to planning committee, as last week councillor Mark Brunt, who is the leader of Rygate and Banstead Council, announced that Rygate and Banstead Council will write to object to this government proposal for fast-tracking and moving the right to hear such local planning locally. So while I accept that it may be considered by this chamber or by the planning committee, I would urge that if we move it to the planning committee, it is heard in due course in the next meeting. Otherwise, I think we've lost the opportunity to have our say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Essex. I'll take a point of clarification from Mr Hall.
Can I start? Thank you, Chairman. Very happy to take this back to planning committee next Wednesday as an urgent item. There is actually a council response already signed off by councillor Goodman, and I think our slight difficulty is that we will end up with two different responses if we're not careful. So, very happy to get back. I did have to spend a lot of time last week talking to Lee Rowley, for instance, who's heavily involved, the MP for North East Derbyshire, in this, and we do have a response. We can then put this together as a combined effort, and I think that's probably much more sensible for everybody and avoids any confusion.
Mr Essex, I will allow you to speak.
Yeah, point of order, if we've already prepared a response on behalf of the whole council without going to the planning committee, I can't see why we need to go to the planning committee to, as a council, decide what our response is. And therefore, if we've already prepared a response and we are in broad support of the proposal which I've put here, might we just move to a vote?
Leader, you have the right to respond. Please respond.
Chairman, yes. My understanding is that the member already had a response and this cannot come back to this council to debate. That is the role of the planning committee. Please, before you put motions in, ladies and gentlemen, please check the constitution and standing orders.
Thank you, Leader. So I'm going to move to the vote on whether you support the proposal to refer the motion to the Planning and Regulatory Committee. All those in favour, put up your hand and press yes on the button in front of you. Thank you. All those against, put up your hand and press the no button. And any abstentions, put up your hand and press the abstention button. So, members, I declare the result of vote, sixty-two, four, one against and five abstentions. The motion will therefore be referred to the Planning and Regulation Committee. Thank you. Moving on to item eleven, A Shared Vision for Surrey, page thirty-seven of your agenda. Before I call upon the leader to introduce the report, I'd like to draw members' attention to the final recommendation D on pages forty-one and forty-two of the agenda, which should refer to paragraphs twenty-five and twenty-six rather than twenty-eight and twenty-nine. I call the leader of the council to introduce the report.
Thank you, Chairman. Today, I'm delighted to present a vision for Surrey's future to two thousand and thirty. It is unashamedly sets out a clear ambition and priority outcomes for Surrey as a place for its residents. We are serious about protecting what Surrey has, what we all value about our communities and how we work together in partnership, ensuring no one is left behind. This is not a county council vision, but rather a vision for all of us that has emerged through extensive and systematic process of engagement with our residents over the past few months. It's a vision for Surrey's future. I believe this vision sets out what is great about Surrey, what our residents want, how we can work in partnership with others and how Surrey residents can play their part in this vision. The vision recognises that there are many positives put forward by residents, as well as issues that we need to address. There are some important principles about how we and our partners can go about achieving more by working together across Surrey, for all of our residents, to prevent problems and to ensure that no one is left behind. Far from being hopelessly aspirational, fluffy, motherhood and apple pie, as some might suggest, this is a real purpose and energy in this vision. It forms the starting point and destination for much of what we and others do, providing an important focus and guiding set of priority for outcomes. As a county, we will bring forward a strategy setting out our contribution to the vision at our next council meeting. We will encourage and support others to do likewise. In pursuit of this vision and mindful of our extraordinary financial circumstances, we fully recognise we cannot achieve it by ourselves. We know that partnership with a range of other organisations will be the only way to bring this vision to life. We are committed to working better with others. This intent is signalled by our draft partnership agreement, which is on appendix four of the report, which clearly demonstrates that we will be honest and transparent in engaging, completely open-minded with everyone in the coming months. In addition, we are beginning to develop our thinking around a new relationship of engaging on a day-to-day basis with our residents. While it's early days, Mr Chairman, and much more work needs to be done, our approach can best be described at this stage as striking deals, local deals, local deals with local communities and local people. As I said earlier this morning, these local deals will differ from area to area, so we will develop this approach in the coming months and report back to members in due course. Of course, key to delivering this vision will be a change in culture and mindset of all of our hard-working staff by working together with staff in other organisations and helping to deliver this vision for Surrey residents. So finally, Mr Chairman and members, once again, I am asking all of you to be game-changers in your local communities, working with your district and borough colleagues, your parish council, your residents association, your community voluntary organisations, and most importantly, with our residents. That way, together, we can achieve a vision for Surrey by two thousand and twenty that we can be really proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. Matters now open for debate. I call Dr Povey.
Thank you, Chairman. I think, given the scale of transformation that the leader referred to for services over the next year or two, I do think it's essential to have a vision to help to make this a positive journey. I think one of the key features of Surrey is the environment that we have, that we live in, which is so wonderful. And I'm very pleased that in this second version of the vision, the environment has been given a slightly higher profile and importance. We do already have lots of partnerships, and I think some of those are listed, but we did use to have a strategic partnership board, which brought together all of the different players in Surrey, so the health, the districts and boroughs, the voluntary sector, parish councils, and I wonder whether that is something that we should consider again, as something that would be useful in this process going forward. Whilst I like the concept of the deal, in the sense that I think it says that responsibility is shared between ourselves and our residents, I do wonder whether a different word is required, because the art of the deal is something that's rather strongly associated with a particular American politician, and I just wonder whether we need to perhaps just think of something different. I think I do disagree with something the leader said before, that whether we should have a one-sentence vision statement which kind of encapsulates what we want to do, and I think that's something that we should consider, and I'll be happy to get, to put together a first draft. Thank you very much, Chair.
Mr Button.
Thank you, Chairman. I agree with Dr Povey that the word deal may need some further work. And the reason I say that is I think we're looking to enter into a social contract with our communities, but that contract has to be balanced. There have to be responsibilities on us to demonstrate our capacity and competence to act for residents and bring something to the table. Now, I have a concern that at the moment, when I go out to Tandridge, where I've been a councillor for twenty-two years, and when I talk about what Surrey services mean to them, there is a deficit model out there about what we do and about our competence, and we have to address that if we're to get the deal to be balanced. Parking enforcement in Tandridge is a disgrace. Everybody knows that. We need to see enforcement on utilities that dig up our roads and don't repair them properly. We need to see enforcement on our contractors who don't deliver for us. We need to see contractual levers in respect of our CAMHS contracts so that our children don't go on languishing in an abyss of self-harm and despair. So there needs to be some of that twenty million that is allocated for transformation, spent on delivering some fundamental consequences which will raise our status and raise our capacity to share the deal. Those services out there which our residents complain about, they see us not enforcing properly, not understanding why we don't enforce properly, and they don't see, they don't see overall a capacity and a competence of which they can be proud. We've heard a lot today about the things that Surrey has suffered from. My view is that we have capacity as a council to fight back and get some basic competences in place before we go to our partners and do a deal. A deal has to have two sides. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Mr Spence.
Thank you, Chair. I do have to confess to being a little disorientated because I've read through this document very carefully and with all the appendages, and I am struggling like crazy to find something in it to object to, because it is, on one way of implementing it, an extremely radical document, and if I take that along with some of the comments that were made by the leader, Mr Hodge, this morning in terms of his radical analysis of the government's role and the change, I just would like to point out there is a seat free here beside me on the residents' benches that I actually think you should migrate across to, because banging the drum against the National Conservative government is going to be extraordinarily difficult, and the positions that you're putting forward, in my view, are more oppositional and radical than I honestly would have thought would come out of a document like this. I do see that Joanna Killian's name is at the end, so I'm hoping there was a fair degree of influence there. If there was, I don't want to ruin your career, but I am very happy with what is in there. So, some of the comments I just quickly make in terms of, when it's implemented, in terms of the recommendations, which again I don't have a great disagreement with, it can't be the big society when it comes to those partnerships with the residents. It's got to be something more substantial than that, but I do take from what I've read a view that that is not what you're talking about, you're talking about something absolutely more substantial. My own view is as much stuff that can be delegated down locally, the better. So Farnham Town Council, for example, when Colin Camp came down, who also made some radical comments that disturbed me when he was with us, was quite keen with the idea of delegating some stuff down to Farnham Town Council where they could deliver some local highways activity, for example, rather than the Surrey traffic teams for reasons that I won't go into. But the more that could be delegated down, done at the town council level, paid for by Surrey obviously, because you've got to can't delegate it down without money, because that's what the Westminster government has done to us, would be important and would be useful. And I think one of the statements I picked up, residents happy in their communities but not feel able to affect local decisions. They've got to be able to affect those local decisions, feel that they can, and again, the more stuff that is delegated down to the local level, the better. Certainly with a town council in Farnham, we can do that on the stuff we're talking about, the transformation, I accept some of the parish councils, it may not be so easy. So the local deals, the talk about changing the culture, the talk about changing the direction, all of it, I think, is important. Councillor Button from the Liberal Democrats on that issue with the contractors who don't deliver, they've got to be made to deliver, and sometimes they are outside our control, and that needs to be pulled back in, and I think this would be a helpful way of doing that.
Thank you. Mr Harrison.
Chairman, well, what's not to like about this vision? Who wouldn't agree with it? Last week at our seminar across the chamber, and indeed the leader has spoken about motherhood and apple pie and soft and fluffy. Now, when this council launched its vision and consultation in May, we said that expectations shouldn't be raised too high, residents should be warned about the financial situation. I'm not sure that this consultation has done that. It was launched by that relentlessly upbeat video, two minutes thirty-five seconds. It was shown at a council workshop I attended with fifty residents exploring the issues and challenges faced by the council, a very worthy and very good seminar. But when it came to the video and the resultant vision and visions, the view was this is utopia. The public were not convinced that they could trust the council to go ahead with the sort of deals discussed in this paper. It's a concept that needs a lot more thought. I'm sorry to be discordant about this, but I am reminded about David Cameron's Big Society and what happened to that. Let's look at the vision statement itself. The consultation started with thirteen ambitions. Some have been joined together, some have been trimmed down and sharpened up. We have ten. They've changed little. They are what we would expect. They deal with children, education, health, social care, housing, the environment's come in, and business. The only area where I can see an element of realism is in relation to highways. The original objective of a well-maintained highways infrastructure, that was the original objective, this is a subject our residents, we know, raise with us time after time, but it's now been dropped from the ambitions. Now, when I met with residents and voluntary groups in my division, which I've done since May, they questioned the relevance of the consultation, they doubted the council's ability to deliver much of the vision. They know about Northamptonshire, they do now, they know about the social care funding issues, that's been the subject of general election and lots of statements since. Their questions were a lot more fundamental. They were proud of their local library, now entirely run by volunteers, and although they staff it completely, they don't feel that they can put in the cash to pay the rent or buy the books, they asked me if the library is to be closed. They asked about the future of the children's centre and what cuts there will be and how this fits in with family support worker. The youth centre has been restructured and staff have left. The schools have asked about SEN funding, and they've asked about paying for the national increase in staff salaries, which has not been funded by the government. Chairman, these are all very pressing questions. They're being asked by our volunteers in our community. The council has a role, the transformation programmes which we will look at next month will tell us about this, but it's not, our volunteers don't have the capacity to fill in the gaps on the scale that this reporting implies. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Mr Kington.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I really struggle with the notion that this is somehow a community vision. Sending out a pre-populated vision template and touring the county, drumming up support for words produced by a few in the leader's office does not amount to a community anything. How better would it have been if we'd given our residents a blank sheet of paper and asked our residents what they wanted for Surrey and then used what they told us to produce the vision? It's not as if you can argue that the vision got a huge vote of confidence. We're told that just three thousand one hundred and twenty-five people provided their views. That added a total Surrey population of one point two million. No doubt someone from the Conservative benches will stand up and tell me that that number is statistically significant in terms of a response, but I will remind them, when I stood up in this chamber and reference over six thousand residents who signed a petition against Part Nine streetlight... Part 9 Streetlight, members of the benches over there couldn't wait to tell me how insignificant that number was. And the worrying thing about this determination to impose a prepackaged done deal is that the methodology is being replicated in other aspects of the vision. Paragraph 15 says the council would like to work with all partners to help develop a statement of partnership working. To help start shaping the conversation, they've actually set out Surrey County Council some issues there, and here's one I prepared earlier, is not the same as sharing the development of partnership working with your partners from the very start. But my final concern is what has been mentioned by councillor Harrison. You cannot send out messages which claims that all things will be fine in years to come, as at the same time sending out financial messages of hard choices lying ahead. Mixed messages about the future services provided by Surrey County Council produces cynism and disengagement from the political process. So, Mr Chairman, I don't believe that this is a community-created vision, and I do believe that worryingly Surrey County Council will continue to see consultation with partners as a we say, you do exercise. However, it will be endorsed today, so I will continue, because we do need a roadmap for Surrey County Council, I will continue to do what I can to help residents achieve their aspirations for the future, both within and outside this vision document.
Thank you. I've got two more speakers, Mrs White and Mr Townsend, and then we'll conclude the debate. Mrs White.
Thank you very much, Chairman. As a number of other people have said, I agree that we do need a vision for Surrey. We do need to be able to have something to aim for, something that we can work with partners and residents to achieve. But I'm rather worried that there is, there's a lot of, sorry, councillor Hodge, there is a lot of motherhood and apple pie in this, but there's not very much to say how we're going to actually deliver it. It talks about partnerships with people, absolutely right, but what it doesn't do is point out that not only this council, but a number of those partners are under huge financial constraints at the moment. So if we're going to have the conversation with residents, we must do it on an open and honest basis, not a series of things in a vision, but actually a detailed map as to how we're going to get there and who's going to pay the fare. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. And finally, Mr Townsend.
Yeah, I'll be brief, Chairman, as always. I think the last three speakers have taken some of what I was actually going to say. One of the points I wanted to make is transformation is a word being bandied about again. How many transformation programmes has this county been through in the last four or five years? How cynical can somebody be that this is yet another one? And everybody said we need a vision, absolutely, absolutely. My point, and then my final and only, the strongest point is, why didn't we do this two, three, four, five years ago? Why has it suddenly come up now? We should have been doing this four, and some of us have actually been saying this at scrutiny committees, and it's not been listened to. So let us be quite clear, this should have been going on four or five years ago, we're only jumping into this now because of the financial situation we're in. Thank you.
Leader, would you care to summarise?
Chairman, I thought this morning was going really well until I heard the negativity of Mr Kington, but then, of course, that is not a surprise to me or to many of my colleagues in the Conservative benches, or we ever hear from Mr Kington, it's negative, negative, negative. What I want to do, Mr Chairman, is set out a positive vision, and when members stand up in this council chamber and ask questions about how is this going to happen, when are we going to do this, Mrs White has just done, may I suggest she rereads paragraph 25 and 26 again, it clearly lays out the strategy there and what we're going to do. And I do agree with Mr Button that we do need to be better at enforcement, it's something that Chief Exec and I and our senior team have discussed, and we do believe you're absolutely right. But I would like to look at the positive things, Mr Chairman, because at the end of the day, we only have one set of money that we get, so I believe we should be positive about our vision for Surrey residents. I know on my side of the chamber, we are absolutely clear that we want the best for every single resident in Surrey, irrespective of who they vote into this chamber, I'll come on to that in a minute as well at the end. Mr Chairman, the vision is about change, it's important that we do change. There are some memories in this chamber which are not very good, because back in 2009, when the leadership of this council changed, we went through a two-year process of public value review, where we went through every single department and every single service, and for two years, we actually saved £300 million. Dr Povey was around with me at that time, I think he's nodding and agreeing, so we have looked at it. We did ask before for this, but the reality is, the vision's about new ways of working. Now, I know the word 'deal', and I don't want to get into trouble with any national politician from some other countries, but the word 'deal' is a start, it signifies what we're trying to do. If somebody can come up with a better word later on, I'm very happy to listen to, I know we will. But it's important that we change things, it's important that we think about the people of Surrey. There are too many people in Surrey who frankly are hindering the opportunity for young people to get a house. Our policies at the moment, right across the county, right across this country, are not allowing young people to get a house. We should be looking at how can we actually use our estate, and we are going to put something out in our cabinet paper in October, which Mrs Evans has drafted for us at this moment in time, about how do we help people to get houses, how do young people get houses? I know Will's looking at me, but I'm not really sure, but the reality is, how do young people get a chance to buy a house in Surrey? I've got a letter from a resident who tells me that the two of them are in work, they're really saving desperately hard, but at 12 times the average that they need to earn to actually buy a house, they have problems. So I believe it's upon us and our district and boroughs to come up with fresh ideas, new ideas, how can we change things and how can we make sure it happens? And of course, we must look after our environment, as Mr Povey just said, and I'm delighted he's on that wavelength now. It's really important, but we have to transform the way we do things. It's easy to throw bricks and bats at people and say, oh, you didn't do this, or you didn't do that. Anyone can be great in hindsight, and I love those politicians who stand up and say, oh, but you didn't do this and you didn't do that. Well, all I would ask is, could somebody produce me a single piece of paper where the cabinet was asked to do a transformation plan? I don't recall one coming to us. We have to be radical in our thinking. Just because some people on this side of the House here want to be negative, we Conservatives, and I look around, I look at my Conservative colleagues, we Conservatives must be positive, we must set out an agenda that we want to do different. How can we do that? Because what Mr Spence really wants to know, what Mr Spence is dying to know, is that it'll be a Conservative sitting in that seat next to you in 2021, and probably it'll be a Conservative sitting in your seat in 2021, because we are going to take the initiative, we're going to go forward, and we're going to change the way we do things, that's what we've got to remember. What also we have to remember, Mr Chairman and members, is that we have been speaking with the leaders and the chief executive, our district and boroughs, they are in total support of this change and direction, they're in total support of the vision for Surrey, I think that's really important. So my message, Mr Chairman, to Surrey residents, I appreciate it's going to be tough, I appreciate none of us joined this council to actually reduce or change services, but the reality is, and that's what we have to do, live within our means, the reality is, we will have to do certain things that we're not comfortable doing, but we must protect our vulnerable residents in this society. If we do not look after the vulnerable, then every one of us do not deserve to stay in this council. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Leader. So, members, the recommendations are set out on page 42, I'm going to take them individually. Mr Harrison. Thank you, Mr Harrison. So, paragraph A, all those in favour of paragraph A, put up your hand and press yes on the button in front of you. Thank you. All those against, put up your hand and press the no button. And any abstentions, put up your hand and press the abstentions button. Thank you. That is 59 for, none against, and seven abstentions. Thank you. Moving to paragraph C, all those in favour, put up your hand and press yes on the button in front of you. Thank you. All those against, put up your hand and press no. Or any abstentions, put up your hand and press abstain. Thank you. So that's 68, zero and zero. And finally, paragraph D, all those in favour, put up your hand and press yes on the button in front of you. Thank you. All those against, put up your hand and press no. And any abstentions, put up your hand and press abstain. Thank you. That should be 68, zero and zero again. Thank you, members. Moving on to item 12, the Surrey Pay Policy Statement, I call the leader of the council to introduce the report.
Chairman, I'm happy to move the reception and adoption of the Surrey Pay Policy Statement 2018-19, which has been through the PPD Committee, which we would all agree. Thank you.
So we can move straight to the agreed. Thank you very much. The recommendation is council agree the updated pay policy statement for 2018-19, which is agreed. Item 13, appointment of an interim statutory section 151 officer, I call the leader of the council to introduce the report.
Chairman, I'm pleased to introduce this item and welcome Lee, if everybody agrees with me afterwards, as our new statutory 151 officer, and you will be kind to us, won't you? Thank you, Chairman.
So, members, it is recommended that Lee Whitehouse be appointed as interim section 151 officer from the date of this meeting, are we agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. 14, amendments to the Constitution, that's a rather serious matter, actually. Item 14, amendments to the Constitution, I call the leader of the council to introduce the report.
Chairman, I'm pleased to move the amendment to the Constitution, which was a request from the leader of the opposition party to me, and I believe we've come to a sensible conclusion going forward.
Mr Button.
Chairman, I'd like to thank the leader for agreeing to this proposal, which will enrich the scrutiny of this council.
Thank you. So I'll move straight to the recommendation. Mr Harrison.
Duto.
Thank you. The recommendation is that council approves the changes to the call-in procedure as follows: a decision can be called in by a chairman or vice-chairman of the relevant select committee, or two members of the relevant select committee comprising of more than one political group; b, council approves the change in membership for the shareholder board, as set out in the terms of reference in annex A of the report; c, that once approved, these changes be incorporated into the council's constitution and published on the council's website. Are we agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item 15, Report of the Cabinet, I call the leader to present the report of the meeting of the Cabinet held on 17 July and 25 September 2018.
Chairman, I'm delighted to propose the recommendations of the Cabinet meeting 7th July and 25th July are set out on the papers.
Thank you, Leader. I call paragraph A, any questions for the leader? No, the Cabinet recommends that the County Council notes the annual report of the shareholder board, are we agreed?
Agreed.
Call paragraph B, Quarterly Report on Decisions Taken Under Special Urgency Arrangements, 1st July 28 September 2018. Are there any questions for the leader? No, thank you. County Council is asked to note that there have been no urgent items in this quarter, are we agreed?
Agreed.
Following discussion on the above, the motion is the report of the meetings of the Cabinet held on 17 July 2018 and 25 September 2018 be adopted, are we agreed?
Agreed.
Item 16, Cabinet minutes, I've received no notification of a question on the minutes, so I call this meeting to an end at 12:43. Thank you.